Good evening, welcome to the New Market Planning Board meeting for April 11th. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get started Glenn Wilkinson is excused, he's out of town, I'd like to welcome Gretchen, who you're going to be the alternate for the council to the planning board?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, great. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
The fun's just beginning.
That's what I heard.
Now who's who? Are you the alternate Gretchen or she's the alternate? Okay, like last year's deal was, okay.
Yeah. Hello? I wasn't here at the last meeting.
You don't listen to me, I just asked her that.
He just said it.
I can't get ignored like that at home, you know. All right.
But he doesn't on TV.
I guess, that's right. Public comments, it is 7:02, there is nobody here to comment, so I will close the public comments at 7:02, and we'll move on to the February 14th minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded by Roseanne. So at this meeting myself, Val, Janice, and Amy were not here.
That's right. And Val had made a couple of changes that...
Okay, that's fine, she can make changes.
So those got recorded Diane, and what will be the official ones?
Well, she hasn't updated the official minutes yet, but...
You want to put them into this record?
Sure, would you like me to review them?
Sure.
Okay, on page eight, the fourth paragraph, Anna Butter came up to the microphone, and we identified that as Mr. McDonald's, and there's two places in that paragraph where the butter is referred to, so that's one of the changes that was suggested, and let's see if I can find the other. On page nine, the one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph, it starts Roseanne Quox stated. At the very end, Val had suggested that we add "on the building," so it would read for that last sentence, "As far as the four units that have gone through the courts twice, there will be four units," okay. "In light of that, if they could brick the front and back, that would be a great improvement." And if they put clapboards on the building...
On the sides of the building.
On the sides of the building.
I think the intent, does that make sense Roseanne, what you were saying?
Where was that, what, on page nine?
Page nine, lines 29 and 30.
I'm sorry.
Or, in the original ones, it's line 32, 33.
It's the last sentence.
February minutes.
Last sentence where you're talking about...
Oh, I'm doing March, for god's sakes. Okay, February.
You were the one that was talking about that.
I'm going, why can't I find myself there, because I wasn't at that meeting, that's why. Okay, page nine. All right, what are you changing on that one?
On the last sentence, you said, "In light of that, if they could brick the front and back, that would be a great improvement," and put clapboards...
On the sides.
On the sides.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody have any other comments, revisions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay, and all those abstaining?
I have to abstain. I just said aye earlier.
You're abstaining, Val's abstaining, I'm abstaining. Are you abstaining Val?
No, I'm not abstaining, because I watched the meeting after too.
Oh, okay, okay.
And if we all abstain, we get into the same problem that we did last month, where you...
Oh, we don't have enough.
This board, you'll never have enough.
Right, you're right.
I think the town council said it wasn't necessary.
So the motion passes four to, what, four to nothing, with three abstentions.
So is that a clarification Diane, we only need a quorum as to the people who can vote at this meeting?
Are here, right. The majority of the people at the meeting, right.
And the fact that you watched it, obviously counts.
Right, yep.
Okay, on to the March 21st meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve the March 21st minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the March 21st minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, corrections?
I don't have any changes, I wasn't there, I'm going to have to abstain, but how was, I read through them, but are they putting brick on certain areas of the building?
Just the front.
Yes.
The front two units that are going to be protruding out from the other two.
And that's it, okay, all right.
Any comments, revisions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Roseanne, Amy, Gretchen obviously, okay. All right, on to regular business. The first item of business is Assigned in Aesthetic Regulations. As we all know, we've gone through these, I guess at this point we want to go through them, if anybody has any final revisions they want to make to these, any suggestions. I'd like to clean this up tonight and schedule a public hearing, so we can just keep these things moving forward.
I just found one Meyer thing, on the third page, section A, where it says A, section 3211. In the second part in red there, where it says Figures and Impacts, shouldn't that be like images? It's in impacts?
Excuse me, we already...
Words, symbols, figures, and...
Peter, could you tell us what page? I don't have that.
Well, there's no page number, so it's the third page.
Third page?
My third page.
And then it's the...
What's the identification?
Down under A.
It says Sign Electronic Message Board, and this was something I added after our meeting, because we didn't have a definition, and I thought, and I think you're right, I think it should be images.
Did you mean images?
Okay. So you're under the general design standards? Illumination?
No, 3211.
Do you refer to the part?
The section, can you go back to the section?
3211.
Section...
Section 32, 121.
Section 3211.
3211, okay.
I'm sorry.
The patent red.
See the patent?
Sign Electronic Message Board?
Yeah, right. The definition of Sign Electronic Message Board.
Just replacing the word impacts with images.
Yep. As we call it, Peter.
I didn't find anything else besides that.
Rosie, did you have anything? Jane?
No.
Janice? Val?
Under that section?
Under any, under any section, at this point.
Well, we're only talking about signage and aesthetics.
Yes, correct.
Are you talking about section 32-2?
I...
Yes.
And you're talking section 32-11.
I have also added, since the committee meeting, if you look under the definition
of Sign Neon/LED Style, I had promised the board I would get a definition, and at the end of that paragraph, I pulled some language off of the website online, which gives sort of a technical definition of what an LED stands for, I never knew that it meant Light Emitting Diode. So we have a technical description of what that is, and I didn't feel I was in a position to refute it, so. Are we okay with that?
Well, yeah, LED's just an acronym for that.
It's an acronym for that.
Right.
But all our other changes got in here.
All the other changes did, yes.
And you moved that one section?
I did.
In the court, you did know that it was a two-lead semiconductor load?
Yeah, right. The sections that I moved...
Was the sandwich boards?
Yes, I moved the sandwich boards from the old version into the new, so I put it into a different section at the very end.
Going under design standards?
Okay, so that goes under design standards, whereas previously it was an exemption.
Are you missing these?
I think I am.
I am too.
Come on.
I think so.
Yeah, I mean, was this supposed to be copied both sides?
Two sides.
That's the problem.
I have one side.
I sent it electronically with both sides.
Want my copy?
Especially when you were talking about three.
I'll share my copy, how's that? I read through it pretty carefully, and I got all my...
Did you print yours offline?
Yes, I did.
So you didn't grab what was in?
What are you looking for Diane?
I printed my own.
We only, we only have one-sided.
I didn't print two.
Right, so there's no page three?
See, it says one, two.
When Peter was talking.
Right, that's what copy is.
My electronic copy didn't have two sides.
Two sides.
Sorry. I saw what I had.
Yeah, our packet only got copied one side.
Right.
My apologies.
So are you good Val? Did you check everything?
Yeah, and we, Roseanne and Diane and I had gone through all of the other, last work.
Okay, so is everybody good with the package we have? We want to schedule it for a public hearing at our next meeting?
Yep.
Yes.
May...
There is a couple of other things.
Nine?
There's an impact fee change that we suggested.
Oh, yeah.
Which is listed. Here, it's on item, bottom of the, oh, okay.
It's going to be on the other stop.
Second page, at the very bottom, item three.
Oh, so that's, that's the one we don't have.
But see, that's what people don't have.
Since I've been here, we have consistently waived accessory dwelling units from impact fee requirements, and it was suggested to me by a couple of the planning board members that we should probably make that change in the ordinance, so it's clear, save us a little bit of time in reviewing these. So I have suggested that we add to the section of the ordinance that defines new development to actually exempt accessory dwelling units from the impact fees.
Can I see that so we can pass it around, so we can all read that?
Yep.
And this was a discussion the committee wanted to bring up forward, because we're not sure, I think the planning board should decide if we want to exempt as a right, all accessory units, or if we only want to exempt studio and one bedrooms, because now you can have a two-bedroom, and if there is an impact, why should it automatically be exempted?
No, no, I think that, what I intended when I had mentioned it was that we should not allow any impact fee waivers anymore, because of the language of the, the language of the ordinance, the new ordinance, states that we can't, we had to take the line out about children, and bedrooms, and schools, and all that.
Right.
So in my mind, and because we went up to 1,000 square feet, and it is, you're allowed up to two bedrooms, there's a high likelihood that there would be children, and we're not allowed to discuss that anymore by law, not politically correct. So therefore, I don't feel that we can offer impact waivers at all for any accessory apartments.
I don't think we can say that.
Every applicant has the right to request a waiver.
Well, they can request it, but I don't think it should be allowed, because the only reason that they can actually base their request for a waiver is that they're not going to have children in there, and we're not...
That they're not going to create an impact on the particular fee that they're requesting a waiver from.
And it's always the school.
Or it could be water and sewer.
Right.
We did water and sewer where somebody was out on ashtray work, where they weren't on top of water and sewer.
But I mean, as far as the impact waiver for school, which is the biggest portion of it, it's the biggest, I don't think any of those should be considered or waived at all, because of...
So that we can discriminate.
I don't think we can say you can't, I don't think we could tell this, a future planning board that you can't grant a waiver.
Right.
And also don't think that, much like we had to go to two-bedrooms, I don't think we can say we'll entertain waivers on zero and one-bed, or one-bedroom units, but two-bedroom units, I think that's a discrimination issue.
Oh, so do I, I think there should be zero waiver for school impacts on all accessory apartments, and then whether...
I think that's up to each planning board to decide, relative to the particular application before them. I think before us, relative to our ordinance, is whether or not we as a board want to state that impact fees will not be assessed against a studio, or a studio, or a studio in a one-bedroom, or as Diane's suggesting, a studio one-bedroom or two-bedroom. I don't think the boards would support that, but I think more the discussion at this level is, do we have nothing in the ordinance, and therefore every time there is an accessory, you know, apartment that is permitted, has to come before us? Or do we want to establish within the ordinance, if it's a studio, does it have to come before us? If it's a one-bedroom, does it have to come before us? If it's a two-bedroom, does it have to come before us? I think that's, that's the discussion, and I think the limitation of what rights we have as a, as a planning board.
And I'm not...
Opposed to saying we can't give, that this, that no impact fees would be granted. I don't think we have the right to do that.
And, but conversely Val, I think if we were to say, if it's a studio apartment, you don't have to come before us, but if it's a one-bedroom or a two-bedroom, you do, I think that falls on the other side of the discrimination thing.
I can see that, too.
I think we need to, I think we just need to remain silent on it, and people come before us, the planning board sitting at that time makes a decision whether to grant the waivers or not.
And each application stands on its own.
I don't think legally we can do much more than that.
Unless we want to just say, we're not going to assess impact fees on accessory apartments, but I don't think we want to do that either. I don't think we do. So, I mean, I wouldn't support that.
Right, I agree.
Across the board.
Right.
Okay.
So I think legally we have a problem trying to differentiate between them, because it ultimately turns into you're discriminating against family size, or whatever.
Keep it as is, and then every application stands on its own.
But in my mind, so someone comes in here with the studio or one-bedroom, and they want a waiver for the school portion, I don't even know that we are able to say we're going to give you the waiver because you stated you're not going to have children in there. I don't, I think with this, with the new state law regarding the accessory apartments, and the language that you're not allowed and allowed to have in there, I would suggest that maybe we get a legal opinion on it, just...
Well...
Let's see, I say we, when the first issue comes before us, we can make a decision if we need a legal opinion at that time.
Right.
When somebody files for one, and I don't disagree with you Rosie, I think if we get into a position where we can't agree, and we're discussing it back and forth, just say, let's get a legal opinion, and see what we can do and what we can't do legally. At this time, I think we just leave it the way it is, and see what comes before us.
I agree, I just wanted to clarify that, I think one of the purposes for this law that was passed was that, the idea was that accessory dwelling units would be treated the same as a single-family house, as far as the town's requirements for, you know, frontage, lot size, et cetera. And if you could take that one step further, saying, well, that means that if a single-family homeowner is subject to impact fees, then why shouldn't an accessory dwelling owner?
Well, what, can you clarify that? An accessory, you don't need to meet the frontage and density or anything like that under the ordinance?
It says in the interpretive materials from the local government center and from the Office of Energy and Planning, that you're supposed to treat accessory apartments the same way you would a single-family home, with regard to, you can't impose additional requirements on it as far as lot size.
That you cannot, cannot, so that's the difference.
Right, so I'm saying, well, you could argue that that means that, well, you should be treating them just like you would a single-family home.
And maybe this board and future boards decide not to grant waivers going forward, see what happens when they come before it.
So, but, we're going to take it out then, and continue our current practice.
Yeah, I think that's the consensus.
Yes, yes.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. Basically, I'm not for that at all, because, because of the language in the new ordinance, and because of what we're not legally able to say anymore, I don't think anybody can come before us, and I don't think that we would be allowed to discuss why, why we would, could even suggest or entertain the thought of giving them a waiver for school, because I think the new law has taken that out of our jurisdiction to do that. And I really think we should get a legal opinion on it, because I just don't think someone can come here, ask for a waiver on the school portion, because they have a studio, because they're not restricted to have as many people in there as they want, and it can't be given, it just can't.
I think they're two separate, I issues...
We have studio apartments that are not part of the home accessory dwelling unit requirements, so, I mean, you can have a studio apartment, you'd have a...
A two, two, two family.
You could have a multifamily apartment building with 12 studio apartments.
That's the mills downtown.
Right, and that doesn't have anything to do with, and I think we should treat all classification of housing the same, is my opinion. And we shouldn't discern, and keep it as a waiver, and for the planning board to review on a case-by-case basis, and if, as Eric said, there's a need for a legal opinion, we can get it at that point.
Yeah, I honestly don't remember the last time we had someone come in for a waiver, probably been a couple of years, we could have one tomorrow, but until, I just don't think we can arbitrarily say if you have a zero or one-bedroom, you might get a waiver, in the two-bedroom, there's no chance of getting a waiver, I think that's, I think that's the wrong path.
So that's coming right out.
Okay, so we'll just pick that out, okay. And the other change is what was suggested by attorney, can I go on?
Yes, go ahead.
Attorney Rattigan, regarding architectural design standards.
Which was the first page?
Excuse me. Well, your second page.
Third page.
Your third page.
Section 32.2-2.
Excuse me.
Yep.
And he's merely suggesting we add Language to the Purpose section as stated.
I'm fine with that, I, what's everybody else think?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead. Is everybody okay with that language? I hear no objections.
Yep.
All right, so...
Do you want to continue, so I can make my own motion?
Yes.
Other than we won't, well, I'll wait for Diane on the overlay district.
Okay.
So the other section was section maintenance, it's under 32-126?
Yep.
Or, or correct me if I'm wrong, was that all part of signage?
Yeah, I think it was.
Yes.
Who has a full, Peter, can I see your full pack? Oh, here, can I grab that one? That's the full package.
Yeah, that was, that was for signage, remember?
Yeah.
Went over that the other day.
Last page.
Yeah, that was for the maintenance of the signs.
Give me one second, and then I'll make one motion.
Yep.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we move to public hearing, amendments to the New Market Zoning Ordinance, section 32-2, to add the proposed section, the new subsection under paragraph nine, which will state to advance aesthetic values through design and architecture, because the preservation or enhancement of the visual environment may promote prosperity and the general welfare. And then also to section 32-11, under, which is a whole, as recommended by the town planner, update to the sign ordinance, which is being replaced and hold. And, that's what we need to move to public hearing, for, when's our next meeting?
I believe it's May 9th.
May 9th.
So the motion's made?
Second.
To forward this to public hearing on May 9th?
Second.
Seconded, motion by Val, seconded by Roseanne Quox. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, we will move that on for public hearing on May 9th.
Changes to the subdivision ordinance, do those require public hearing?
They do, yes.
Okay, so I'll make a, I'll make a motion to change Appendix A of our subdivision regulations under section 3.09 landscaping, to add the new section C, Relative to Entrance Design and Signage, as stated within the handout by Diane Hardy.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on...
That's to May 9th as well.
No, hearing no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, that will move on also, so...
So those are all for public hearing?
All for public hearing on May 9th. Oops, sorry. You doing okay there? Going to make it?
I think I'll make it.
Been sitting next to Peter for 20 minutes, and you're sick already.
You can share your water with me.
No, that's okay.
All right, the next item is the update from the zoning subcommittee. Where are we?
We are, well, the committee has met, and we have reviewed, and are recommending language pertaining to the assisted living overlay district, which includes three lots which are currently located off of New Road, and the three lots are, tax map R3 parcels, 58, 7 through 11, and tax map R3 parcel 56, and tax map R3 parcel 54. And I have a map that I brought along, I think we've had...
I put it in the corner there.
Okay, and I also have a smaller version of it, if you want to look at that.
Can we put it up anywhere?
Yeah, can we? I don't know if we have a spot to hang it.
There's an easel in the back, but I don't have a...
Here, I'll, I'll put it up, just so that people at home can see.
I have smaller versions of it, so...
Can you see that in the screen, the tele, televised screen?
On the TV.
She's not, okay, now, yeah, I think we can see it, but it's very fuzzy, it's not very sharp.
I'll just point them out, so, for people at home, this is the property along New Road, it's in the B, some portions are in the B1, some are in the B2, and they'll be referred to as the, the town in New Market owns two of the parcels, which is basically the Wilson and Ham properties, if you can see them, they're in blue, and then there's also the, here, the Wilson property, and then Sharewater Investments owns this middle section here, and then the Ham property would be the back end, which is the sections here, which are the, is the, that the R3 58-7 through 12, so town, Sharewater, and town properties. So those are the areas we're talking about, and hopefully people at home can follow that, but this will be available in Diane's office as well. Oh, they're written down. Oh, okay.
Almost, almost 100 acres.
Thank you.
A little bit less than 100 acres, total.
Yep.
So is everybody okay with the proposed changes for that?
Yep. So, you want to talk about what the changes are?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay. It's, the proposal is to, where's my copy? The proposal is to set up an overlay district for those three parcels for assisted living. And, that's my copy of it. And the purpose of the assisted living overlay district is to allow for opportunities for low-traffic impacts, and to allow opportunities for assisted living and memory care units within that overlay district. What that means is the underlying, underlying zoning would still apply, which, one of the tracks is a B1 zone, the other two are B2 zones, so for the time being, that would remain, but this would provide an opportunity for somebody to come in and build assisted living units, which are defined as for persons over 55 who are in need of assistance with at least one daily personal life activity, such as walking, bathing, eating, dressing, and other activities, and these facilities would have to be licensed by the State of New Hampshire, and there's regulations through the Department of Health and Human Services. And in addition to providing residential care within these units, it would provide supportive services for personal care and health-related services beyond just room and board. And this would also provide the opportunity for memory care, which is a more specialized form of skilled nursing, and it would be for individuals with memory impairments, such as dementia, Alzheimer's, disease... And it would be for individuals with memory impairments such as dementia, Alzheimer's disease, and any other memory loss, um, health issue. And it would be provided with twenty-four-hour supervised care within the facility. So basically, that's what the intent is, to provide an opportunity for this type of development. The committee has come up with some minimum design standards. One being that the minimum lot size for such a facility would be twenty acres, a minimum of twenty acres. There would be a road setback of a hundred feet. And the way it's proposed at this point is that there would be an overall development cap within that zone of seventy-five units for the entire zone. And that there would be a landscape buffer around the perimeter and parking would be available based on the number of assisted living units or, or beds within the facility. And under this overlay district, this type of use would be allowed by a special use permit issued by the planning board. And it would also be subject to our normal site plan review requirements. And we have certain conditions under which the special use permit would be allowed, which includes pretty much our standard requirements, having a public hearing and notices and so forth to the public. And that basically, in a nutshell, is what is being proposed. And this, as you know, is one of the recommendations that came out of the economic development committee's work that they did with John Conry and Peter Quarks.
Only question, I meant to bring this up actually in our meeting. Did we ever get a, do we ever get an answer on the RSA one sixty-one J two? If in fact, they have an age restriction in there?
Um, actually, I have a copy of that right in front of me. And, actually, that's a good question.
Because assisted living could also apply to, I mean, you could have a head injury.
That's right.
Young person.
That's my question, isn't it?
Um, that's a really good ques, good point. And it does not, in the RSA that we refer to, it does not have a age restriction. And it could be a person age eighteen or older.
I think the intent was people in need of assistance.
Yeah, so your suggestion, we take that out where it says for persons over age fifty-five, I'm fine with that. Because like I said, somebody could need assistance, they could be young and have had a car accident or.
Well, there's a lot of other diseases.
Yeah, absolutely.
You don't have to have a car.
That come into that.
Sure, I agree.
Classification.
Everybody okay with striking that proposed language? So over age fifty-five gets removed. It's a good, good point, Val.
Now, would that open it up to any type of facility if, if you don't have? Because, I mean, we, we can't be less stringent than what the RSA states, but we can add more restrictions to it. So we could add fifty-five or older. I'm just thinking if we're going to end up getting a, you know, a type of rehab place or something that wouldn't be good for the community or certain areas or whatever. So that's the only concern I would have. I would much rather leave the fifty-five and older in there. I think it protects the community a little bit better.
What you mean by that?
Can I, in the state law that, that defines assisted living, there are several exclusions. And why don't I go over that so you can understand what they are? It does not include a correctional facility. It does not include a facility for the treatment of alcoholism or substance abuse. It is not the same as an emergency shelter for homeless persons or victims of domestic violence, of family violence. It does not include a hospital, I think that's pretty self-explanatory. And it does not include psychiatric or substance abuse treatment programs. It is not a hospital, I mean, a hotel, it is not a hospital in it. But it's not a hotel or a motel or a recreation facility providing overnight accommodations. And it is not a community living facility pursuant to RSA one twenty-six A. And I would like to probably go back and research that, but I believe they're referring to community living facilities for persons with disabilities, developmental disabilities. So it really does fill a specific.
Gives us the protection.
It does, absolutely. Good.
Okay. Does anybody have any other comments? So we want to move that forward for a public hearing on May ninth?
Make a motion that we hold a public hearing on the, on the new section to be added to the ordinance, thirty-two dash one sixty-two with regards to assisted living overlay district as outlined and amended tonight.
Did I say May ninth?
May ninth.
Yes. Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Moving onward, new and old business. Does anybody have any, either new or old business they would like to bring up?
We need to make committee appointments this evening.
Oh, okay.
It didn't get put on the agenda, but I think we couldn't do that under our other business.
Sure, I'm fine with that.
Okay, who's not here?
That's right. Glenn's on everything.
I made a list.
So Rosie, you were on the.
CIP.
CIP. Are you interested in staying on the CIP? Is anybody else interested on the CIP being a?
I'll do the alternate again.
Alternate again, okay.
Jane and Rosie, okay.
Good with that. Who's on the con con? Was that? That was Ezra, wasn't it?
So we have an opening there.
Anybody interested in being on the con con?
Conservation Commission.
Conservation Commission, yes.
Amy's done that before.
Mm-hmm.
It's a good group.
Are you still on that, Amy?
Uh-uh, no.
No.
Any volunteers?
What are all the choices?
Oh, you're already going to.
I know.
Did you put in your application for the regional planning commission?
Yeah, I, oh, no, I didn't.
Oh, okay. But you're, you'd like to continue.
So maybe see if Glenn wants to do that.
Yeah, we'll ask Glenn at the, the next time we see him. And budget committee, right?
No.
Oh, we don't have budget committee, right.
Economic Development Committee, Val is currently.
I'll stay on it. I'm not sure, you know, what the council's going to do with that committee, but I'll stay on it as long as it's there.
Okay.
Okay, what else do we have?
Well, and then we have the, the zoning subcommittee, which up to this point has been Rosie and myself and.
Dale.
Dale has offered and Valerie.
So Dale's no longer here?
Dale thinking of coming off, because he's the chair? So maybe Gretchen wants to come on?
He didn't, I think he'd like to.
I can't remember which way he went.
Continue to, you know, provide input to the committee and.
Do, so maybe.
He said both ways, so I just wanted to make sure before.
Well, let's leave it this.
I think he, have Amy bring it back to.
Yes, if he wants to stay on it, that's fine.
Confirm or double-check and then make sure he does what he wants to do.
Because I'm sure he'll be pretty busy this, next year.
And then, you know, if he's on it, that's great. If not, we'll take it up to the next meeting.
I didn't write it down when we talked about it, so I apologize. Well, it's a planning board committee, so, yeah.
Yes.
Does Gretchen come on or Amy or?
Yeah, they can, they want to.
Yeah.
We'll see what, let's see what Dale has to say.
I'll ask him.
And even if Dale attends, because we wouldn't have a cor, I mean, we wouldn't have, have to have a public notice because he wouldn't be serving as a planning board member.
Right.
Interested citizen.
So that it for now, Diane?
That's it for now.
All righty. And so any other new or old business?
Oh, I just wanted to ask Amy if she could bring something back to the town council. Did Steve have, I know the, we had a meeting with, the, the planning board had a meeting with town council. Did Steve have any other boards and committees before him within the last couple of months?
You mean with the town council?
Yeah.
No, because we met the beginning of the March and then we had the vote and then we had the recount and then we've had our organizational meetings. So we haven't had any other committees before us, like, like we did the joint committee yet.
Right, yeah, just maybe a reminder to Steve that according to the charter, he's, he's required to have all boards and committees in front of the town council for a joint meeting in February.
All right, I'll let him know.
Okay, just a reminder.
Yeah, sure.
Been a lot going on.
Yeah.
All right, I think we all have in front of us also a memo, the Spring Planning and Zoning Conference, which is scheduled for Saturday, April twenty-ninth. Anybody interested in attending, obviously let Diane know. You can make arrangements if you can carpool. That would be great.
I think Glenn is planning on attending.
Okay.
He mentioned that to me. We have money in the budget to cover registration. For new members, it's very worthwhile.
We were talking about going.
What we're doing, yeah.
It's all worth going and attending.
Yeah.
Any committee reports?
I think as the subcommittee, we're just continuing to work on the overlay district for the CCRC. So we, we'll, that's our next project.
You always have another project, don't you?
Well, I just don't want the council to think that, you know, when we gave you the update that then.
Oh.
At the end of it.
We're still working.
We're just at least trying to get stuff moved forward for public hearing and then this will be the next thing that we can fine-tune and then move forward.
And could I mention, just on behalf of the gardeners, the Newmarket gardeners in town, we are having a meeting tomorrow night at the library at six-thirty. We have two or three new members, which is great because we're all in our late sixties to early seventies and we need some help. And we'll be getting some plants in soon. We're planning a plant sale up at the library, June tenth, I think. And we'll be planting Jerry Ave in the wall garden soon. So anyone who's interested in gardening, learning, or has a lot of expertise, I think we got a master gardener coming in, which is great. So we could always use the help, so.
Okay, excellent. Any committee reports? Relatively quiet, I think. Anything town council just.
Yeah, we, we've met a couple of times. The first time was just our organizational meeting. So, you know, Dale was elected the chair and Council Weinstein was elected vice chair. And then we selected all of our committees that we're going to be working on. And then at the last meeting, they did the dedications for the town report and the, the thank you to the outgoing counselors and presented clock. What was the other item I had? I had one other thing, town report presentation. Oh, and we had an orientation for counselors' presentation, PowerPoint presentation that Steve shared as well. So, um.
That's pretty much it.
That's it?
Eric Wood or Diane or Amy, when is the dam committee going to give an update on what's going on?
Well, that's a good question. We're actually moving forward with a revised scope of services. We're going to be going back to the three engineering firms that submitted proposals to us way back last October and ask them to update now that we have clarity on what the expectations are from the state. And we also did a refined model. We had hired Gomez Sullivan to come back and refine some of their figures because they found some areas where there might have been some overestimation of what the amount of design flow would be for the, meaning the, you know, the requirements of the letter of deficiency. So the committee is planning on meeting again, hopefully on April twentieth, and fine-tuning the RFP and going forward with the, you know, the next phase, which is, you know, bringing the consultants back and negotiating a contract. We hope to go before the council in June is our game plan anyway, with a recommendation for hiring an engineer to move forward with the next phase. Of course, we're focusing now not on the entire dam and the spillway, but we're focusing on an option, design option, to raise the abutment walls on either side of the dam as a solution to meeting the design capacity, which appears to be one of the most cost-effective approaches. But we need some more engineering data to be able to establish that. So we'll be looking for an engineer to help us with a stability analysis on just the walls and also a, to do some conceptual design on what it will, what, what the design will be, what the costs will be, so that we'll have some hard data that we can work with as part of our next budget process and our next CIP process. So I would say probably in response to your question, Janice, in June, we'll probably have an update from the committee at that point. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Diane, do you have anything to report?
I don't have anything else at this point, thank you.
You want a motion to adjourn? So make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. See you May ninth.